I would like to call this meeting of your North City Council order. Audit, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mr. Fennell? Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Labutus?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Marmy?
Present.
And Mr. Raff?
Here.
We have eight here this evening. Please rise for the invocation by Mr. Labutus. Called by the pledge of allegiance. Shall we pray?
Heavenly Father, as we come to prayer right now, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have given us to serve you and to serve the city. I ask that you be with us this evening as we discuss the legislation and be in our discussions and help us to keep in mind your vision for our city. These things I ask of Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
I make the motion to excuse Mr. Fennell.
Motion to excuse Mr. Fennell is our second. Second by Mr. Cost. All the favor seeing probably saying aye.
Aye.
On the same side. Thank you. That passes. Next, we have our minutes of the November 4, 2019 meeting. Those have been distributed. Is motion to approve those?
Motion for motion of notice, Labutus.
Second by Ms. Hall. All the favor seeing the file by saying aye.
Aye.
On the same side. Mr. Fraser, I miss you already. See that? Next, we have reports of standing committees, one from finance, one from service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have two reports this evening from city officials, one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, an operating report ending October 31, 2019, and one from Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator. The income tax reports ending October 31, 2019. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no communications this evening. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. There are two sections for citizens' comments. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is time to debate or question and answer period with counsel. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this first section? Just please raise your hand. Ma'am? So just give us your name and address for the record. Anyone else like to speak this first section? Again, there's another time. Okay.
Hi, Carolyn Cook, 898 Lake Low Court, Newark, Ohio. I'm concerned about our democracy. And our country is representative democracy, meaning that we vote for people who represent us in making the laws. We can't all vote on everything, but we vote for our representatives. As a citizen of Newark and this legislative district of Ohio, I am concerned that our democracy is at risk. We recently elected new council at large members, one of them already serving a term as ward council member. Then that individual was appointed to a Ohio legislative position opened by the resignation of an elected state representative who was appointed to a position within the Republican administration. Mark Fraser gave no service or very minimal service in the position to which he was newly elected. I can accept that Mark Fraser would give up his solid council seat to become elected to the position of council at large. However, I cannot accept that two seats on council for which Mr. Fraser was elected will now be filled by people appointed by the Republican Party. And the seat of our Ohio legislative representative will now be occupied by Mr. Fraser through appointment, not election. Thus, voters have had no vote for three people who are supposed to be representing them. This is not a representative democracy. This seems to be a trend among Republicans in this area. Have someone elected to office resign so that that seat can be filled by someone appointed. This not only leaves the voters without true democratic representation for a period of time, but it also gives the person appointed the well-known advantage of incumbency. And I'm certain that we all understand that the incumbent has a certain advantage, name recognition and just the fact that they're the incumbent. In 2013, Councilman Johnson was appointed by the county Republican Party in September to serve the final three months of Duke Frost's term after Frost was appointed by Governor John Kasich to the county's domestic relations court bench. In 2017, Curtis Johnson, Republican, Fifth Ward, announced his resignation in June, and he wasn't even seeking reelection that fall. And Lang was appointed and ran as the incumbent in the coming election. Since Mark Fraser has not served the people of Newark in his elected position, he has not honored the ethical commitment to voters that candidates make when they run for office. It is not in keeping with representative democracy for his seat to be filled from one day, from day one, by someone they did not elect. I have nothing against Mr. Lang or Mr. Fraser. In fact, I voted for both of them for Newark City Council seats. I thought both have done a good job on council. I have a big problem with Republicans appointing elected officials to non-elected positions and then filling positions for which voters should have had a say with people they appoint. This is not democracy, and the people of Newark should be paying attention. After the Constitutional Convention in the United States, a Mrs. Powell of Philadelphia asked Benjamin Franklin, "Well, doctor, what have we got, a republic or a monarchy?" With no hesitation whatsoever, Franklin responded, "A republic, if you can keep it." I do not think we will end up a monarchy, but I fear we are very close to an oligarchy, a government in which a small group exercises control, especially for corrupt and selfish purposes. In this case, a political party maintaining power. I vote for individuals, and I count on them to think for themselves, to listen to their constituents, all of them, not just the party elite. I am concerned by the lockstep voting by our elected officials according to party affiliation at all levels of government and within both parties. I do believe that democracy is the best form of government. I truly fear the loss of it because of party politics and the future of voters to hold our elected officials accountable. Holding them accountable requires that our vote means something. And I'm also against the mayor's pay raise. It wasn't brought up during the election, and I think we should have had a chance to vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a correction, Mr. Fraser was a councilman at large, not a ward councilman.
Oh, right.
And the replacement is done by the rules of the Secretary of State. Okay. Let's go on to ordinance. Are you want to speak? Quickly.
Michelle Bullen Smith, 237 Violet Court. I thought that was beautifully done, and I want to go on record as agreeing with it as well as the advocate editorial article that was put in the paper recently. I think stated it, the situation, very well. So that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Thank you. Go on, ordinance is on the second reading, 19-30.
Ordinance 19-30 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Lang. An ordinance creating one additional position of court security bailiff within the municipal court and setting compensation therefore.
You've heard the second reading of 19-30. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I'll offer a motion that we adopt ordinance 19-30.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. I see Judge Stansberry is here with any questions. Any discussion on 19-30? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. 19-30 passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 19-76.
Resolution 19-76 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Lang.
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for fiscal year 2019 and remuneration justice assistant grant funding.
You've heard the second reading, 19-76. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-76.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 19-76? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. 19-76 passes eight zero. Next on the second reading, we have 19-77.
Resolution 19-77 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Lang. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the second reading of 19-77. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-77.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 19-77? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. 19-77 passes eight zero. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 19-78.
Resolution 19-78 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency.
19-78 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 19-78.
Motion by Mr. Raff. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-78?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Just curious whether the emergency clause in order to make advertising publication deadlines.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Audit, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. 19-78 passes eight zero. Next on the first reading, we have 19-79.
Resolution 19-79 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
19-79.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule in Resolution 19-79.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule. One, Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expedite these items. In order to get them into the appropriate funds, we have some bills that are due, and also we want to be able to spend some of them or just reimbursing so we can get the books straight before the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Audit, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. Two-day reading rule is now waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-79.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any other discussion on 19-79? Seeing none, audit, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall? Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
And Mr. Raff?
Yes. 19-79 passes eight zero. And finally this evening, we have 19-8.
Resolution 19-80 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
19-8 is on its first reading. It'll be held for two weeks till our next meeting, which will be December 2. Thank you for your attention tonight. Appreciate it. That's it for the legislation. Now, turn your agenda over if you have one. Next is comments from citizens. Your second opportunity. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Please raise your hand. Ma'am? Mr. Crawford? Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Laura Canby, 1120 Wintoried Avenue. And I just wanted to say something about the mayor's raise that he gave himself, that I think it would be a good idea to forfeit that raise and put it towards some of the problems in this town, like the homelessness, the drugs, and the hungry people. That would be greatly appreciated, and I think the whole town would put you up on a pedestal for it if you would give it up for any of those causes. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford?
163 South Second Street, Daniel Crawford. I'll just start off by noting, of course, that the mayor won't be personally giving himself a raise. It'll be with the help, of course, of city council if it were to happen. I'll just start off by noting that democracy is, it works when the voters are informed. You know, well-informed electorate get to be responsible participants in this representative democracy. With that having been said, you know, this past election, pretty much everyone I voted for lost. That happens. You know, it's used to that over time, and it's fine. But that's how this thing is supposed to work. But I made all the votes I did being as informed as I possibly could have been. I'll also note that, you know, while some of the things I'm about to say may seem like they're partisan, the fact is, everyone in this room who knows who I am should know that I am a strong advocate for nonpartisan elections. I served in the Charter Review Commission in 2017 with the primary purpose of trying to give the people of Newark a chance to shed this partisan label from our ballots. And I would like to see that up and down the ballot at every level of government, because that's the way our founding fathers pretty much designed the system anyway, was to be nonpartisan. But with that having been said, and I failed in that effort, obviously, I still don't understand what is so difficult about giving the people a chance to vote whether they want a nonpartisan system, but whatever. When it comes to what we've seen here recently, I think, and one more comment, actually, this is something I would like to say about our committee meetings. I also oppose the whole idea of having our committee meetings and extended council meetings on the same night because we have the situation where we had to postpone the other part of the personnel meeting until after this council meeting. And I miss the days when we actually had committee meetings on one night and full council on another, where we could actually have these conversations at length without interruption, you know, on one night. Because it creates this condition now to where we have to abruptly end the committee meetings to bring on the full council. And I understood the reason why they did that, because, believe me, I like it. It makes my schedule easier to be able to just come here two nights, you know, two nights a month and sit in all these meetings. But at the same time, it makes an inconvenience for the citizens when they want to be heard about an issue at length and actually have a back-and-forth interaction, because not everyone wants to stay here until, with lengthy council meetings, until 9:00, 10:00 p.m. talking about these things. And, but one of the excuses for why we, for why the council moved to this current schedule with committee meetings was because you wanted, one of the, I should say, arguments was reducing costs, you know, reducing how much we're using for electricity, what have you. And that's how, that's one of the arguments we've heard for a number of things, for why we don't have the full staffing that's recommended for our firefighters and police. I mean, yeah, we have full staffing for certain standards that we've set here recently, but for what's recommended of a city of our size, we just don't have it in the budget. Why certain other things can't get done left and right. I mean, I've heard plenty of times, oh, where are you going to find the money for that? Where are you going to find the money for that? But yet, then, of course, we hear about the proposed pay raise. And I'll say personally, I think that the appointed officials deserve a pay raise. My strong opposition is to elected officials. I oppose the city council pay raises, and I also oppose this. It's not that they should never receive a pay raise. It's just, at this time, when we're being told that we don't have the money for this, this, or this, it is bad symbolically for us to, you know, require this pay raise. And I understand the purpose of this legislation is to remain compliant with our state constitution, but it doesn't have to include a pay raise. If this isn't about serving the interests of those who were just reelected, then by all means, pass the legislation without the pay raise and then wait for that discussion until it's going to affect people who are not, who were not just reelected, who were not just elected. Have that discussion next year or the year after about the pay raises. Freeze the pay at the current rate. Heck, in the future, and I'll say this in full disclosure, I personally think that city council positions should actually be full-time positions, but we just don't have it in the budget right now. It's hard to justify that argument to the people of Newark that, hey, we should make our city council officials full-time despite the fact that we don't have anything in the budget for anything else that we need. So like I said, if this is not about serving those who were just elected, then pass something that doesn't raise anyone's pay but is compliant with the state constitution, because it's not essential to raise anyone's pay. But I also understand the argument of trying to attract new people to this position. So if it's just about that, if it's not about people who currently hold those positions but attracting new candidates, then pass it without any pay raises, at least for now. Because it was mentioned earlier, we were not told about this possibility before this election. So how are we, the voters, supposed to be able to make an informed decision? It is time that we stuck with these sudden changes right after an election. And I'll comment something else that was also brought up. Everyone should know, I personally like Mark Fraser. I really do. I've mentioned time and again, heck, I like everyone up here, even the mayor, everyone. I like everyone up here despite whatever disagreements I have. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had to single you out there. But, but I like everyone here. I do. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So whatever criticism I offer, please know it comes from a deep concern about our process. Because again, my arguments about against the things that are happening are against abuses from both parties, all parties. I would very much prefer that we had non-personal elections, not to help Democrats, no. I want to help break the stranglehold that both parties have in our electoral process, because that's exactly what non-personal elections would help do. If you want to be an independent, non-personal elections would help you run for office without having to go through either major party or any party. That's the way our system's supposed to work. So the problem I had with the recent appointment issue was that the people of Newark were under the impression that someone was going to be serving a full term. That's the problem I have with it. Now, I, once again, I like Mr. Fraser, so I'm, I've always been given the benefit of the doubt that this was not the plan all along. But if it was, then that's part of the problem. That's part of why our system is broken and why our representative democracy is in danger. And this is a pox on both houses, both major parties, because they've both done it. And I want to see an end to it. And I think the city of Newark is a place where we can be the leaders to bring an end to this stuff. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Just FYI on the council meeting situation. We changed about two years ago, and I believe this is our, only our second time we have had to suspend. So I think, in the most part, it works pretty well. And I'm disappointed you didn't vote for me. Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Hold on.
City officials? Anyone? Mr. Fraser, would you like to join us this evening for one last time? You know, we'll bend the rules a little bit. Have you take your old seat. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to offer congratulations to Councilman Fraser. I think that, you know, I think that he's going to, you know, he's sat in this room. He knows experiences of which are cities, challenges and opportunities. He and I have been down on Saturday mornings at the Newark Homeless Outreach. He's had some good ideas dealing with public transit in our community, and I hope that he takes those experiences with him to the State House to fight for the people that I hold most dear in our community. You know, our community is, you know, about a third of our community is a paycheck away from being in trouble. And, you know, I believe that he does have those experiences and cares about those folks, and I hope he does champion them at the State House and, and with definitely the kids. You know, we have over 300 homeless kids in our Newark City School System and wanting to take care of them, wanting to take care of our families that are in poverty here in our city. And so I know that, I've seen him work, you know, with people dealing with public transit. You know, regardless of how you gain the position, I'm, I hope that you will advocate for those folks and to work and to continue to keep those folks in your mind in decisions that you make. And then hopefully you'll have a door open, because I may pop over to Columbus and, you know, harass you a little bit, so, you know. But I do wish you well, and, you know, I look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quickly, I had the opportunity Saturday to watch a live fire training with some of our Newark City firefighters and our mutual aid partners. Very insightful, good learning experience. Nice to see Chief Pat Connors as well as one of the instructors for the event. And thank you to the Layton family for donating the home for this training. It was in Newark Township, and again, our Newark firefighters, you and them were there along with our mutual aid partners. And finally, best wishes to the Newark Catholic football team as they continue to make a run in the state playoffs. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Mr. Raff? Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to wish Mark out. I wish you well.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus.
I just wanted to, again, wish Mr. Fraser all the best as he moves on to the House. You're always well-prepared and serve the council well and the city well. I know you'll continue to do that for the city, but also the entire 71st District as well.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, so first, I will start off and congratulate Mr. Fraser. I was one of many people I think were very excited to have you in the State House, and I really think you're going to do a fantastic job. I was very disappointed in seeing some of the way that this whole matter was covered by our Newark Advocate, in particular, the editorial, where I don't think there's been any, any of the folks involved have had a chance to speak or really were questioned. You know, I'll let Mark speak to, speak to the, you know, how everything went down himself, but I know just from being friends with him, the guy went down to the State House without any idea he was actually getting the appointment that day and was under a lot of stress going through that whole process. But, you know, I think, you know, and I think, Ms. Cook, your comments really spoke to this. But, you know, I think, you know, and I think, Ms. Cook, your comments really spoke to this, left out of that article was, same year, 2017, we had a Democrat who resigned, and the person who was running was appointed to take that seat. You know, I think we're in a position right now where we've got a lot of Republicans in the, you know, in higher, higher positions in the state, so you're going to see a little bit more movement on the Republican side, but this is a process that's played out time and time again, and I don't think anything really different is happening in this, in this instance. The process itself for replacing Mr. Frazier is outlined in our city charter, which is a document that our citizens vote on. So when we talk about a representative democracy, that's the opportunity the citizens have to vote or not approve of a city charter change or of the city charter itself. That was a document originally passed by the people. Every five years, we review it. We reviewed it in 2017. Mr. Crawford was on that review committee. I don't recall this subject coming up. I, maybe it did, but I don't recall it, something that was really discussed. And maybe this is a situation now that's highlighted it, and so next time, I think 2022, when it comes up for review, maybe it's something that we can address. But the city charter itself, I would say, is a very democratic document that's passed by the people. And so this is not, you know, it's not a new process that was made up this year, it's been in our charter forever. And, you know, the process itself ultimately puts it to a committee, and that committee is from, you know, the central committee of one party, but those committee, central committee members are also democratically elected, and anybody can run for a central committee position as well. And so I guess I don't, I don't share the same concerns that others do with, with the way the process is played out. I think the original processes that were designed is working the way it's supposed to work. We will have, whoever is appointed will serve for two years, and then they'll have to run again for that spot. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Law Director Sassen, since I screwed up the order. I'll, you can go next.
Thank you, but I will pass.
Mayor Hall.
Yeah, I'll congratulate Mark too, and I want everybody to remember, we have a representative in the House from Newark, and that could have been any other community in Lincoln County. So we have one with Scott Ryan, and that is an asset in many, many ways, so I wish the best of luck. I also want to wish Newark Catholic football best of luck as they go to the playoffs. They've got a big, big game this weekend. And Newark High School marching band, they went to OMEA finals for the fortieth straight year, and that's the only band in the state of Ohio that has done that. So I was, joined them about a week ago and gave them a proc, and they were pretty wound up for that and had a great time, so. And finally, Veterans Day around Newark was something to be very proud of. The entire weekend, we started with a birthday dinner, 244th birthday of the Marine Corps, and I joined them for dinner, and then on Veterans Day itself. So I want to surely thank all the lodges and all the groups that work well to make it, honor our veterans as they so deserve, and of course, those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. I will pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting for two weeks. I too want to congratulate Newark Catholic football team for getting to where they're at. I want, if anybody that can come out and support Saturday night, they play a very, very well-organized team, a very good team who has had great success in the past with Harvest Prep. They will play Westerville Central, at Westerville Central Saturday evening. It should be a great game. Newark Catholic is peaking right at that right time of the season, so if you really want to watch some great high school football, Saturday night at Westerville Central, the Green Wave will be taking on Harvest Prep. I too want to congratulate Mr. Frazier. I've got a list of things for you too after the meeting.
I'm taking notes.
But I will, I'm just going to tell you that I appreciate the fact that we have somebody who, who really digs into every single aspect of legislation and will definitely make sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted, and he is, he is one who will listen to anybody and everybody, and no matter what the cause, he will take it up if it's something that is important to the citizens that he represents, whether it be the park in his own community right near his home, or it's something citywide, and now, if it's something statewide. I think that we have a great individual who's going to represent us well, and I wish you great success. And thank you very much. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Raff.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Mr. Frazier as well, and everybody's been flowery about the comments towards him, and he is one that absolutely will listen to anybody if you can get him to stop talking long enough. Just wanted to throw that in. But, you know, you've always come to council very well-informed, very well-prepared. There's no doubt about that. He'll do that on a state level, and it's, it's awesome that we have somebody from the city of Newark representing on some state level, so that's awesome. As far as the appointment process goes, maybe some people aren't aware of this, but Mr. Frazier was required to take out petitions and have those completed and returned to the Board of Elections by sometime in December of 2018. It's a very long election process. It's not just a day. So the decision to run for council arch was made well before any talk of the appointment came. I know that, I know for a fact that he walked into a meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning a week and a day after the election, not knowing whether he was going to have the appointment or not. I know there were five or six people that were up for that. So it wasn't like he took out petitions a year earlier, knowing that he's going to get appointed and knowing that he's just going to abandon the position. That wasn't the case at all. An opportunity came up. Because of the things that he's done on Newark, in the Newark Council, he's been recognized at the state level as somebody who would be very qualified for that position, and I for one, am very proud of that. The appointment process is a constitutional process, it's a legal process, and it is a process that is used widely by both parties. To call out the Republican Party is taking advantage of this process, I think is unfair. It's been used by both parties legally and fairly, on the state level and on this board. I know there's been city council members, both Republican and Democrat, that have been appointed, and that's, that's a legal process. The person who will vacate his seat for the rest of this year will serve until January 1. The person that will vacate his, or, I'm sorry, that will occupy his seat starting January 1 will not get the luxury of serving four years. They will only serve for two years, and then they will run again for a special election, because that is the legal process that is set within the state of Ohio, within the city of Newark. And there's nothing wrong with that. That happens all the time on a regular basis. I know, Daniel, you talk about nonpartisan elections all the time, and you mentioned democracy works with a well-informed electorate. And I've got to be honest with you, I think having a party name open and honest and out front is part of having a well-informed electorate. The fact that you're a Republican or the fact that you're a Democrat tells people where you stand on a lot of issues without even having to talk to somebody. That's part of informing them. I think if we had nonpartisan elections, it would be nonpartisan in any way. They're going to continue to be partisan elections, they just won't have an R or a D next to their name at the ballot, and that's the only thing nonpartisan about it. And that's why I oppose that. I do want to say congratulations and good luck, best of luck to Newark Catholic football. I also want to say congratulations to Newark Catholic volleyball, they made it to the state finals. Congratulations to them. I'll call a service committee meeting for, that's one. It's a receptive thing. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Well, Mr. Frazier, you have been a very dedicated, extremely prepared councilman, and I know I for one appreciate what you've done here, appreciate your work, and expect that to continue at the State House. I expect you to have as many questions there, if not more than you've had here, and I will issue. So, here's this, and we'll do the final time, Mr. Frazier.
Mr. President, as a point of order, I'm not under the three-minute restraint.
Yes, sir.
Am I? So, I'm pretty sure I can go on for as long as I want, according to our rules. So.
So.
So when it comes to this whole situation, right, the Newark Advocate never called me, they never asked for information, they never wanted clarification. They wrote a hypothetical piece about conjecture. And so, the way that it worked is, is I ran for the election, and I won the election with the full intent of serving. The next day, Scott Ryan resigned, and by the 11th of November, I had sent a cover letter and an application and a resume in order to be considered for the position. Five people were interviewed.